I'll call the September 20th meeting of the common council's order.
Okay, I'm gonna ask our youth counselors to come forward. John Nowicki is unable to join us tonight, so we'll have to swing him in at the next meeting. Let me just stand up in front, so hands can get pictures or whatever. Do you raise your right hand? Do you Zachary Saether and August Cadot and Mike Nowicki, having been appointed by Mayor Bruce Hagan as youth representatives to the common council of the city of Superior, Douglas County, Wisconsin, faithfully swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin, and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of your ability, so help you God.
I hear you.
We're gonna let you sit and have a seat again.
Would the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Olson is excused. Counselor Bridge.
Yeah.
Counselor Bender.
Yeah.
Counselor Stenberg.
Yeah.
Counselor McDonald.
Yeah.
Counselor Joyle.
Yeah.
Counselor Finsland.
Yeah.
Counselor Herrick.
Yeah.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah.
Counselor Brown.
Yeah.
Counselor Nowicki.
Recognizing the form, we'll proceed.
Item three is a proclamation that Counselor Bender is going to present on behalf of the Superior and Harbor Town Rotary Clubs.
Actually, it's Dragon Boat Chair Bender. He'll be making his presentation, and I have with me Tom Wondolkowski, past president and also a former Dragon Boat Chair, and John Lozey, also a member of Superior Rotary. And on behalf, and we're also gonna stage for a picture before we leave, but on behalf of, maybe we wanna go over here now. Somebody wanna grab the key checks and all that?
Representative, the police chief first, since I think that's a cop check, but on behalf of the 2011 Lake Superior Dragon Boat Festival, we wanted to say thank you for all that you did from the police department, because greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Was this lawful or should it be?
I don't know.
Okay, lawful. Maybe we wanna change that. Okay.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the police department.
On behalf of the National Hall of Mary Margaret.
On behalf of the 2011 Lake Superior Dragon Boat Festival, we want to pay part to that for all that you did for the festival.
The gentlemen are a pleasure to work with, and I would be remiss if I didn't note that many divisions of public works assist with your festival, and we're happy to do this.
You guys do a great job, and we really appreciate it. The combination of the city and that great event is just a win-win for everybody. We all realize that, so, thank you.
I think it might be win-win-win-win, John.
I guess I just would like to take a moment to address the council. I want you to know how grateful the Rotary Clubs have been for the cooperation that we've got from the city to run this event. I mean, it is a win-win event, but this event wouldn't happen if we didn't have the cooperation of people like Mary and the Chief of Police, and we really do appreciate it. I mean, I remember the first years, there were some rocky roads, but you know, it's gone smooth, it's been good for the community, and it would not happen without their cooperation.
John, you don't say?
Well, there's not much else you can say about it, but it is wonderful. I get a chance, my only week of the year, I get a chance to work with the fine fellows and women of the city of Superior, and they do an outstanding job. And I work for Lakehead Constructors, and we sit back and we look and don't get involved sometimes like we should, but we do really get involved in the Dragon Boats, and the Rotary's a great organization. We're pretty excited about all the money we raised for both the community and also the cancer fight that everybody seems like touches everyone's life, so, thank you all.
Item number four is approval of the September 6, 2011 regular council meeting minutes.
For the motion in second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 5.1 is a public hearing, a resolution introduced by the planning commission to vacate and discontinue North 52nd Street between Coming and Stincing Avenues, a portion of Baxter Avenue between North 52nd and North 53rd Street, and a portion of an alley located between North 52nd and North 53rd Streets and Coming and Baxter Avenues.
At this time, I'll call for a public hearing and ask those that wish to speak in favor of to do so now. Those, yes, sir.
I'm Dan Markham, representative of Reuben Johnson &amp; Son. If there's any questions, I'll answer them.
Please step forward.
Thank you. My name is Dan Markham.
Please turn the microphone on. Thank you.
Is that on now?
Nope.
There we go, now it's on. Dan Markham, representative of Reuben Johnson &amp; Son, and who has requested the vacation, actually, our subsidiary RJS Real Estate Group, so if there's any questions about it, that's why I'm here. I don't have any other comments.
Any questions of Mr. Markham? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the second time, those that wish to speak in favor of may do so now, and for the third time, those that wish to speak in favor of may do so now. Hearing and seeing none, those that wish to speak in opposition to may do so now. Those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. For the third and last time, those that wish to speak in opposition may do so. Hearing and seeing none, a call to public hearing to a close. I ask the pleasure. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Item number six is a consent agenda.
Motion in second, Counselor Bender.
5.5.
6.5, 5. Look.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So, motion in second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, Counselor Bender?
Yeah, let me go ahead and read it.
Item five is the Finance Committee, minutes of September 8th, the recommendation to approve a $25 per month payment to each youth counselor.
Motion in second, refer it back to committee. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. Would the clerk call the roll?
Counselor Olson is excused. Counselor Bridge.
No.
Counselor Bender.
Yes.
Counselor Stenberg.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Joyle.
Yes.
Counselor Finsland.
No.
Counselor Herrick.
No.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yes.
And Counselor Brown.
No.
Five yes, four no, so it passes to refer this item back to the Finance Committee.
Excuse me. Oh, no, it doesn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just added a, okay. Motion fails.
Pardon me.
Go ahead.
I'll ask the pleasure again, you wanna bring it back on the floor?
Boo for approval of item 6.5, number five.
Motion in second, any further discussion or discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion to approve? Would the clerk call the roll?
I've got some discussions.
I'm sorry?
If there's opposition to this, I'd like to know what it is.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
If there's opposition to this, I guess I'd like to know what it is, for a point of discussion.
Counselor Bender?
Yes, I do have opposition to this. First of all, I think it's great that we have these student representatives, and I think we do need to recognize them, but I think maybe a better way to recognize them would be some sort of plaque or some sort of certificate at the end of their time of service, and some sort of honorarium then.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, I think that a lot of people feel that what this is for these students, and again, I commend them for doing what they're doing, but I think it's considered an internship, and this goes, they get credit for their school, this goes on their resume, and I think, like I've told both of my kids from time to time, that there's gonna be things that you do in this world, you know, you might not get paid for it, but later on in life, especially if you're a servant of the public, but later on in life, you're gonna get paid for it tenfold, so, that's what I think that the lesson is here.
Any further discussion?
I know Joan is here, do you wanna say anything, Joan?
Oh, sorry, and I couldn't hear a little bit of what was going on back there, but I'm assuming there was concern about the counselor's stipend, and after talking to the youth counselors, I guess we agreed that their voice in this would be that they would be in agreement with whatever the city opted to do, and they would be, you know, fine with that, so I guess they're putting that decision in your hands, so, I don't know, do any of you have anything else you'd like to say?
Okay.
Or the counselors, I mean, the youth counselors?
I just wanted to ask, are you still having trouble? I know we used to be able to fill county positions more quickly, they had a stipend, there was some concern that we were not having enough applicants, is that still true?
Yes, but I, I mean, honestly, I mean, that's not the purpose of it, I think the purpose of that, I mean, I don't wanna use a stipend as a recruiting tool, but when youth look at some of those two, you know, the two things, and, I mean, quite honestly, they have expenses like everyone else does, and more times than not, they have very, you know, lesser opportunities to earn, you know, for gas money or, you know, for whatever that stipend is used for, so, yes, that was why it was initiated in the first place.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, I kinda originated this idea to begin with, and it was not my idea to begin with. I had the opportunity to go to Washington with a university extension one year, and Wisconsin was one of the few states that was wise enough to take youth with them out to Washington, and one day I had the opportunity to have lunch with one of our students, and I really commended him for coming along with us and things like that, and I asked him, I says, you know, what would you like to do? And he says, well, you know, he says, I'm really interested in politics, he says, and I would really like to be on a city council or a county board, and I thought, gee, you know, what a great idea that is, that if we had youth that could be involved with our county boards and with our city councils, and so I carried forth with that idea, and I talked to our then-mayor, and with our county board chair, and then with the extension program, and, you know, we got that going, and they come up with a good program to recruit youth, and these kids have taken their time to write essays and to almost get elected to come to these things the same way we do. We get paid to come to these deals, you know, and they, they could be doing a lot of other things, they could be going to movies, they could be going sledding, they could be up to the skate park, there's a lot of things that they could do, and they do have money expenses for coming here also, just like we do, for pencils, papers, whatever, you know, so I think that it's more than fair that we do give them a small stipend, you know, $25 to come to a meeting, I think that's more than fair. They could be all cutting grass or something, but here they are, learning all about politics, and, you know, they're gonna be here in the future, and hopefully, they'll be sitting in one of these chairs, and this is just a great opportunity, so, I think they deserve it.
Counselor Finsland?
Yeah, this was well discussed at the Finance Committee last month, and the determination was that the county board already provides a stipend for their counterparts, who are the youth representatives of the county board, of $25. The suggestion was that we were gonna offer $25 per meeting, and we modified that to $25 per month, not to pay them, but to provide them with some incentive to participate, and I think the encouragement. Well, I understand that they're not allowed to accept remuneration for, excuse me, for participation, if they're going to use this as a senior project, so they would have to deny that, but I think that it's such a small amount, I think if a person's excused from one of those two meetings that we hold each month, we would still continue to offer this stipend to them, but if they would miss both, that'd be a matter of not receiving the $25 for participation. I think it was well discussed, and I think it's a good suggestion. Bob Brown was the one that brought it forward to us, and I appreciate that.
Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, I was just gonna say to you, I believe we don't get credit at school for this, so I'd be correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they don't get credit for this.
Counselor Bridge?
We had that discussion in finance too, and they can get credit if it's a senior project, but then they can't get credit for it if they get paid for it. You know, I wasn't necessarily in favor of this when I saw the referral, but it went without a single voice of opposition to committee, and then back here with approval, so, you know, shouldn't have gone to the committee if we're gonna stop it now.
Counselor Saether?
You're correct in saying that we don't actually get credit for this in school. We could use it as a senior project, but I know John is already, me and John have already done our senior projects, we already have them approved, and we wouldn't be using this at all. I don't know what they'd be using, but that'd be in three years for them, so, I know we don't get credit at this for school, like on our transcripts, it doesn't, we don't get any official credit for this.
Any further discussion? There is a motion in second on the floor to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pardon me? I'm sorry, roll call?
Counselor Olson is excused. Counselor Bridge.
Yes.
Counselor Bender.
No.
Counselor Stenberg.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Joyle.
Yes.
Counselor Finsland.
Yes.
Counselor Herrick.
Yes.
Counselor McKenzie. Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to two.
Where's the, six to?
Seven to two.
Seven to two, motion carried.
Okay, item seven is business by department heads. I'm submitting, requesting consideration of consolidating the number of polling places within the city from 10 to 5, and as indicated in the memo, I'm not asking for any action tonight, I'm just asking that you seek some input from your constituents and concerns, and relay those to me or have them call our office directly, so we can work through this. And if you have any suggestions for a possible location that we may not have thought of, or if your constituents do, we'd love to hear those also.
For the motion, receive and file, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
7.2, Fire Chief Rigstad is requesting authorization to enter into an agreement with the state of Wisconsin, Department of Military Affairs, Division of Emergency Management, to provide 12 team members for the statewide structural collapse team.
Chief Rigstad?
Yeah, this is a program we've been involved in with, for many years, we've received a lot of grant money for equipment and training. The state had some problems getting this thing set up, dealing with so many different unions across the state, so they have decided to contract with the individual fire departments to provide these members. We're reimbursed for their time while they are down training, and we've got 12 members there, the training that is done down at the React Center at Volk Field is excellent training for our members, and the only way to continue this amount of training would be to enter into this contract.
Referring to motions, motion in second to approve. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 7.3, Planning Director Cirque is recommending to award the bid to purchase property known as 1203 Weeks Avenue to Ashley Tenman for $1,501.50.
Discussion, second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
7.4, Planning Director Cirque is recommending approval of an easement requested by UW Regents of the state of Wisconsin to install fiber optic line on city-owned property on the western edge of Heritage Park, south of North 28th Street.
What is the pleasure? Heard a motion in multiple seconds, discussion? Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, Jason, just a question for you, where's that coming from? I see where it's going, but where is it actually coming from? I mean, is it coming from Minnesota, Valon, or is it, I know that right now there's fiber optics running along 28th Street, and up to this point, is it coming from that direction? And I understand University's gonna use it?
There's a couple of different things going on here, and 7.5, we'll also talk about that. The UW Regents one is actually the publicly owned one, that's more coming from, and I don't know the details, Mary might know a little bit more, it's coming from Eau Claire, and servicing more or less as a connection for institutionals, and as well as to us, Douglas County and that, so it's more of a localized type of thing. The next one, which you actually approved a couple of meetings ago on Connor's Point, is one coming from Minnesota that jogged over into Wisconsin, has come up 35, Highway 35, through the city all summer long, and this is actually their last portion. They were deciding whether or not to go in this section, and they decided to, so that's why essentially we're here, so, there's a couple of things going on, yeah, a lot of fiber projects going on this year.
Okay, do you know if this, you said it's coming here to this complex here, is that correct?
The Badger, oh yeah, the Badger Net one, the UW Regents one, will be utilized by the city of Superior eventually, yes.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
7.5 is approval of an easement requested by Inventus Telecom Inc., Hickory Tech Corporation, to install fiber optic line on city-owned property on the western edge of Heritage Park, south of North 28th Street.
Heard the motion in second for approval, discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
7.6, Public Works Director Getzmann is requesting to terminate land lease with William Witrock and approve a land lease with Alan White for handerspace at C3 at the Richard Ibonne Memorial Airport.
You've heard the motion in second, discussion, Counselor Herrick?
Just a minor thing, Jeff, just so you know, there's a couple, just want you to know, there's a couple typos as far as dates go on the signature page, just so you're aware of that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Thanks.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Item 8.1, Mayor Hagan is requesting authorization to become a publishing partner with Positively Superior Magazine at a cost of $3,000 for 2011 and $13,500 for 2012 with funding from the hotel motel tax budget.
You have a packet in front of you, Mr. Ott, I may wish to speak to this. Mr. Ott's company, AdMax, is the company that put together the Duluthian. It started out being subsidized by the city of Duluth, is now, I believe, maybe 75 pages long, six times a year, and it's gained a lot of traction with regard to people knowing more about their community and the surrounding area, as well as what we have to offer. It hopefully would be enlarged as we would for the city's spirits that happen in Duluth. The problem we have, in my opinion, I guess, is that we have very much difficulty getting anybody's message out as to what we have in this community, the success stories. Examples being, as we speak today, there are a lot of industries in this town right now, contrary to public belief, that are expanding, they're hiring people, they're delivering product worldwide, you know, hardware product as well as soft and commodities, but they're having trouble finding qualified skilled labor, particularly welders and machinists. And I believe we need to promote who we are and what we are in order to attract that further attention, as well as one other idea that we have with the Economic Development Corp. and the Planning Department, is to have the industries in our town be our ambassadors, not the mayor, not the public works, not the attorney, to be the ambassadors, say, we've been in this community X number of years, we are so successful, we want you to be successful too, call us, we'll tell you about our experience in Superior, Wisconsin. That, I believe, will add traction to economic development opportunities. So, the reason I present this to you is with that in mind. Mr. Ott?
Mayor, counsel, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. We're excited about this opportunity that's before you tonight. It's an exciting 40-page starting-out magazine here in Superior, it is brand new. We hope to launch it in December, and we have garnered support of publishing partners, editorial partners, that will help with the success of the magazine. We're hoping that you vote to join those other organizations, which are the Chamber of Commerce, WITC, the Bid District, and UWS, to join in the success of the startoff of the magazine. I have about 15 years' publishing experience, as Mayor Hagan stated, we have about a 15-year history with the Duluthian magazine. That magazine fluctuates between about 60 and 70 pages, it's published every other month, and that's what we hope to do for Superior. The magazine that you have in your proposal package today, of course, is just a little mock-up, but it is, the look and the feel of what the magazine will entail, we hope to tell the good news stories that are happening in the business community and in the city, and we hope to promote that positive, obviously, the magazine, positively, Superior, was chosen on purpose to promote that positive mentality, the positive enthusiasm, and gain, and get the ball rolling and keep it rolling, and keep telling the story of the good news of the businesses that are happening in Superior. I'm happy, and I'm an open book, if you have any questions. I've enjoyed the publishing that I've done the last 15 years, and hope to bring that experience to Superior, and I'm just very excited about the opportunity.
Thank you. Counselor Bender?
Yes, thank you for being here tonight, and I would like to know what the projected audience or market is going to be for this.
Certainly. We will start out with about 1,500 circulation that will be given directly, through direct mail, to all the businesses in Superior. We start out with the businesses because that's where I have my success. If you get the businesses to support the magazine, it will continue to grow. The other thing about going to the businesses is traditionally, they have a four-to-six time pass-along readership, so not only are you gaining that 1,500, multiply that by four to six times, as it gets passed along the office to other employees, people take it home, put it on their coffee tables, it's on reception desks, that's how you build repetition in each magazine.
And what about after that initial market?
I'm going to say only we'll see.
Okay.
I can understand that answer. Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Bridge?
Are you talking about distributing just single magazines or at some public places, you know, like, you know?
you know, like grocery store entrances or exits? Would you have multiple copies for people to take to?
At this, thank you for the question. At this point, the city will get multiple copies, the chamber will get multiple copies, but the direct mail is the most important. That's what guarantees your circulation to the advertisers. So, that's what we're going to focus on first, and then also there'll be multiple copies to hospitals, to clinics, obviously UWS, obviously WITC, so yes, there will be multiple copies mailed first, and then we will also bundle some, but at this point, it will not be delivered to the grocery stores until it's positively successful itself.
Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, what's the outlook for the outside market? I mean, getting to other communities, you know, around the state and so on and so forth, so that they, that are outside can see exactly what's going on?
It's a great point. We plan on doing that through the Internet. I support a couple of magazines now that are Internet-based, and anytime somebody does a search, the way we put the magazine on the Internet is a flip-page format, so you can look at it just like it's a magazine, only it's electronic. What also happens with that magazine is it'll be search engine optimized, so anybody that searches for any topic that might be in the magazine, be it, for instance, just looking up Superior, that word will be repeated in the magazine, I suppose, 200 times minimum in each magazine, so it'll go right to the top of the search engines, search optimization. And so, that's how it will get outside the, outside this general area. That won't happen right away, the magazine has to get a little bit of attraction hold here in the city first, and then it'll have enough revenue to turn that on, hopefully after the first six issues. We're looking at probably December of 2012 to light it up on the Internet, and maybe sooner. It really depends on the business support in the community, and you guys actually know about this before the businesses do. So, that's, we'll be hitting the streets as of tomorrow with your positive vote and gathering the advertising support that'll make the magazine profitable.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Bender?
Yes. What types of stories do you forecast, at least for the first few issues?
Well, we have an editorial committee meeting starting on Friday, where the editorial partners will get together and decide on what stories will happen first. I do know that there's a story about the Murphy Oil Refinery that needs a little more publicity, needs to be told a little better, and my guess is I'd be very surprised if that doesn't hit with the December issue. Some of the things that we want to talk about are development at the port. We've got all this beautiful property along the port that's being developed, what's going on there? Some of the things that are happening downtown. What I hope will happen is we'll find a story of a business, perhaps downtown, that's done a facelift. We'll get a chance to take a picture, interview, tell that little story, and it'll maybe rub off on the next guy next door to do that type of a project, and it'll have that kind of influence and that kind of feedback in the business community. Those are some of the types of stories that we hope to tell, but there's literally hundreds of stories that need to be told, I think, in the area, that aren't being told by anybody.
Actually, I have two suggestions right away. This is a great picture on the front cover, but wouldn't it look better if the dragon boat races were happening?
I am counting on you, I'm counting on you to supply us with the most beautiful photography available for that story, and my guess is probably the April issue or the June issue?
Well, earlier would be better, because I can think of a few people who would probably volunteer to write an article.
That'd be a lot of fun. And there are more stories just like that out there that need to be told in a four-color magazine, so we're looking forward to that.
Counselor Joy?
Yeah, we were given copies of the magazine, and I'm kind of curious, while the ads are in English, the texts are in a foreign language, which might be Latin, possibly Spanish.
You're very good, that's Greek. That's Greek. We aren't willing to share stories yet until I launch the magazine, so unless you can read Greek, it's going to be a tough one.
It's Greek.
It's Greek.
Next month. Okay, thank you.
All that is, is a computer program that fills the pages, and we use that just for a mock-up purpose.
Further discussion? Discussion by the public? Heard a motion as second? All in favor signify?
I don't think we don't.
Oh, there's no motion. I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun here.
I'll move.
Heard a motion as second, Counselor Bender, Counselor Brown. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciative, and you'll see it, I believe, in December.
Item 10.1 is a resolution of the City of Superior, Wisconsin, providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation corporate-purpose bonds.
Heard the motion as second to approve? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 10.2 is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation corporate-purpose bond Series 2011B of the City of Superior, Wisconsin, in an amount not to exceed $6,420,000.
Heard the motion as second? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carried.
Item 10.3 is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of general obligation promissory notes, Series 2011C of the City of Superior, Wisconsin, in an amount not to exceed $1,710,000.
What is the pleasure? Heard the motion as second to approve? Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carried.
Item 11.1 is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Department, amending the traffic code, disabled parking by adding 5821 Ogden Avenue, both sides.
Heard the motion as second? Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carried.
11.2 is an ordinance introduced by the Finance Committee, amending the City Code, Chapter 114, Sewer Usage, Section 62, user fees by increasing the monthly fixed charge to $5.50 and the variable user charge for residential and commercial connections to $5.18 per cubic foot, effective January 1st, 2012.
Heard the motion as second? Discussion? Director Vito?
I'm not sure. I'd like to make a few comments.
I just didn't know if Mayor, if he wanted to make any comments before me.
Well, I certainly would. This has been an arduous issue for more years than we probably all care to think about, and in my short tenure here, in the five months I've something like that I've been here, it's occupied a considerable amount of all of our time. And I would be, you know, upfront with the fact that in campaigning for this office, I had a little heartburn, concern, and dismay with regard to some of the rates and why the rates are there, I should say, as to what they may be, mostly with the sewer runoff, I mean, the storm runoff fee, which I will address here in a moment. The sewer rates, some would, nobody's going to be happy in any economy if you're fully employed, getting from the employee, making a lot of money or not. If your grocery raises the price of your milk, or your barber raises the price of a haircut, it's all an issue that's a discussion point of concern, no matter what the issue is, and certainly when government enacts these things, it becomes probably more elevated as far as discussion. And we all recognize the times are tough, and we also have to recognize the times are tough for the community, and most communities, most states, the federal government, all around the world. That's not an excuse, but the fact of the matter with regard to this particular issue, and I'm voicing my opinion now after much review, and much review that I have been afforded that I didn't have available to me when I was running for this office, the information that I, the salient features of what we're about to discuss, there's several for. One is that we had, I'm sure Dan Romans and the Public Works Director and the Finance Director and others have had more meetings with the DNR, but we do have a considerable issue going on here with our SSO overflows, some permitting, or some functionality of the ASD that has not provided the service, if you will, as to the requirement of permits. The last meeting we had with the DNR, correct me if I'm wrong, they have said we will work with you and give you, I think the permit is up October 1, I'm not sure, give you permit to, with the understanding that you'll forge forward in making these corrections, improvements, and headworks projects, as has been promised and have not been completed. So, the permit is one issue, and the continuation is an issue, a primary issue. The second issue is, and I would, I would capture this issue as a management issue, and that is the operation, I'm not casting aspersions at Director or Administrator Romans, but it's been operating, EST has been operating in deficit for possibly the third year in a row. We need to, I think that has to be corrected outside of sewer rates, although it's all encompassing, if you will. To accomplish that, we will be calling for an Environmental Services Review Committee, a citizen committee, to look at three things. One is the organizational structure of EST, one is the components of services at EST, and the third one is staffing. And they'll bring back recommendations long before this time next year with regard to what their findings are. The other component is, and Director Vito can explain this much better than me, when we issued bonds, I believe in 2005, for capital projects at EST, part of the requirement of the bond issuers and bondholders is that we maintain 125% reserve up and above what our debt load is, and we do not have that. We do not have that level of reserve. Why that is, it's a, I think it's, it's an issue with regard to a number of factors. One of the factors is, in 2010, water usage in the community was down by 10%, therefore less revenues coming in. Another factor would be monies have been expended for projects that we all are familiar with, so the revenues and the use of the revenues have been depleted below the 125%. Why is this an issue? Director Vito, once again, can explain this better than I, but the bonds could be called because we're not living up to that criteria and requirement within the issuance of the bonds. What does that mean? That means they could call for the bond, and all of the outstanding debt that's attached to the bond, and being that we don't have 125% of reserve, it would have to come out of either general revenue, meaning the tax levy, which is separate from the enterprise fund, and we don't have the money there either. So, I mean, it sounds like a push and a shovel and a plead and a threat, which it isn't. I'm standing, I'm sitting here, actually, I'm standing here saying that I am going to be criticized, and I accept that, for the stance that I have taken here to fore, but the fact of the matter is, this is a business decision that I don't know which way to wiggle with regard to doing what we need to do to carry on. The fourth factor that I failed to mention is, if we do not attend to the necessity of level of enterprise revenue, all capital projects will have to cease and desist. And what that means is, there's headworks projects, there's UV project, there's the interceptor project, first one, I forget the name of, it's thrown down by, on the, by the island there. What these projects will encompass is what we've all put up with yet this summer, with the hope of moving the water along faster to get to the plant and not being backlogged in the system, and having what we experienced, let's say, in Billings Park, where they have combined sewer, whereby the amount of water, and they had a five and a quarter inches and a half an hour, I think July, or July 4, I think it was, July 1, whereby we had homes backed up that haven't backed up before. It's an anomaly, but it's a serious issue. So, the headworks projects that are necessary, both for compliance and for the community, without a rate increase will have to not happen. So, that's in a nutshell why I'm supporting this, and it's not a pleasant issue for any of us, and I think we're all going to lose sleep over this, if you will, because we have a constituency that likewise won't be exactly pleased, but I hope we can get the message out as to the fact that, what do you do? These things have to be complied with, the headworks projects have to go forward to provide the services, and we're in jeopardy of losing the grant, we're in jeopardy of permitting, and we're in jeopardy of bonds being called. It all sounds very scary, but it's real, and the other, the do-nothing option, I believe, is one that is not an option.
Director Vito?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate your comments to the council and the public in summarizing the issue. I'll try not to repeat any of the points that you've already made, but, yeah, the issues I agree with what the mayor has said, and we do have some very concerning issues that have come up over the years. Today, we had an informational forum down in the atrium, and I wanted to thank the staff from Environmental Services and some of the Finance Department staff as well, and I know, Mayor, you attended, and a number of counselors were there. And so, I had an opportunity to talk both to the counselors in some more detail about what's going on, and had some really good discussions with members of the community that were concerned about what's happening and just wanted a better understanding of what's going on here. On a positive note, I think I have one or two people that are very interested in sitting on the committee that Mayor Hagan was just speaking of, so I think there's some good interest in that endeavor. The format that we have for tonight is, we would like to start by playing a very short video that kind of summarizes the issue that not only our community, but other communities are going through as far as taking care of infrastructure that's below ground, and how it's been somewhat ignored by probably most of the communities for a long, long time. And we have a few different versions of the presentation. The first option is one hour and 27 minutes. The second is 16 minutes, and the third is 3 minutes and 49 seconds. So, we're going to go with the just under four-minute version. After that, I will make just a few comments in general, and then we'll hand it over to Dan Romans for a short PowerPoint presentation, and then I have some, I guess, some final comments about direction, recommendations of where we can go after that.
I think the average American family probably has a bit of difficulty visualizing all the assets that are under our feet.
We don't understand the value of the services that we use just for our personal needs.
We're talking about a commodity that's essential to life. I can't imagine a more important resource than water.
The water infrastructure is vital for disease protection, fire protection, basic sanitation, economic development, and for our quality of life.
And if the infrastructure is not there to actually deliver that water in the volume and the quality that's necessary, then the community simply can't exist.
You wouldn't let your house be 100 years old and not ever do any maintenance to it. You would make sure that it was safe.
The problem we have is that our water infrastructure is old, 100, 200 years old, it's not been upgraded or big, so replaced.
Water provides so many functions that it relate directly to health and well-being.
A hundred years ago, it would have been hard to imagine turning on the tap water, and now it's an expectation.
Our water and wastewater systems really are engineering marvels. Because it's buried, it's invisible to us, and we tend to take it for granted. That's a mistake.
People see that their roads can cave in, their bridges can fall, things that they can see are falling apart. Also, the infrastructure they can't see is falling apart. That's the one underneath their feet.
We have about 2 million miles of pipe in this nation. If you're walking around in an urban area, you're probably stepping on a pipe.
We all have a life expectancy. If you don't maintain them, and constantly check them, and rehabilitate or repair, you're going to have a big problem. They're going to collapse, they're going to fail, and all of a sudden, the water, or the sewage and all that goes through them will not have any place to go. It'll back up into homes, it'll back up onto the street. You're going to have some very large messes to clean up. It's normally out of sight, out of mind, once it comes to the surface, it's a whole nother animal.
We're talking about system-wide problems that would take tremendous human resources to correct.
We are facing a crisis in infrastructure. We are having to choose how to spend our money.
On a national scale, if you looked at what we're spending now, and you looked at the additional investment requirements over the next 20 years, there's a $540 billion difference.
Problem is large, and it's getting larger every year to practically maintain these systems. If it doesn't get under control, it's going to be out of control.
The future of our economy, our schools, our individuals, public health, it's critical to reinvest and make whole this infrastructure that's falling apart.
We need to accept the responsibility that future generations need to be able to rely on those assets to have the same quality of life that we have.
Infrastructure across this country needs to be addressed, and it needs to be addressed now.
So I think you can all understand the main point of that, is that we do need to pay attention to what's below us and tend to it. And just some of the main comments that I wanted to make, we haven't had a sewer rate increase since 2007, and the mayor is correct, we started running deficits in the wastewater utility in 2009, 104,000, 2010 was 120 or 140, I don't recall, and we are set to run another deficit for this year. I'm estimating somewhere between 100 and 125,000. And again, there are a couple of reasons for that. The water consumption, as the mayor mentioned, has decreased a full 10% from 2007 to today, and that's, of course, what we base our sewage bills on, water consumption. Dan Romans is going to take over at this point, and he's going to talk about the three main capital projects that we see coming up in the very near future, through 2012. They are the Headworks Project, Ultraviolet Disinfection, and Ammonia Nitrogen. So at this point, I will turn it over to Dan.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I promised to do a short PowerPoint presentation, so the intent is to be able to go through this and answer any questions that you might have. Purpose of the presentation is to describe the projects listed in the 2012 rate structure, and to describe what projects, what they will accomplish for the community, and describe the costs and the timelines for each of the projects. The purpose of the Environmental Services Division of Public Works is to manage the city's legal obligation as it pertains to the Clean Water Act expressed through the NPDS permit, and those obligations drive a lot of our costs, the treatment process, the combined sewer system, we have to have plans and programs in place, and then sanitary sewer situations such as overflows. There's been much discussion about the Headworks Project, so I'd like to touch on that shortly, and then certainly if anyone has questions, feel free to ask or jump in. During peak wet weather rain events, the East Second Street Sewer System experiences peak flow rates of about 40 million gallons per day. That's a rate of flow, it isn't for the full 24 hours, but that peak flow causes the system to overload, it cannot accommodate all of that flow, and that results in wastewater escaping the system, and that's called sanitary sewer overflow, or what we call an SSO. These overflows are occurring along East Second Street, and ending up in the basins, ending up into Newton Creek, Faxton Creek, and along Central Park, and also into the Lake Superior Harbor. This is the area that's primarily affected, and it impacts several districts within the city, and kind of in a large view. It impacts District 2, 3, 4, 5, part of 7, and District 10 are all impacted by the system that cannot handle the capacity during a wet weather event. The sanitary sewer overflow is discharge, raw, untreated sewage that carries the potential for dangerous organisms that can cause people to become very sick, and the Headworks Project is intended to reduce the frequency of sanitary sewer overflows and basement backups that affect the East Second Street corridor and central parts of the city. Note that I said reduce the frequency, when you have non-permeable soils, like Superior has clay soils, you can never say you're going to eliminate all SSOs, but what you want to do is you want to limit those to the worst severe, most severe events. And the Headworks Project is broken into three phases. Phase 1, I'm going to talk about tonight, is the diversion structure project slated for 2012. Phase 2 is the main plant capacity management upgrade slated for 2013 and 2014, and Phase 3 is the extreme wet weather flow management upgrade in 2014 and 2015. And as the mayor alluded, we will have an Environmental Services Committee that will be working with us as we look at these costs, and as we get the engineering studies back, and we'll be reporting back to the council on these projects. So you'll be apprised of what's happening and how things are going in advance. Each phase addresses different pieces of the SSO problem that we're encountering. The diversion structure is the first phase, and will be located near the intersection of Highway 2 and 53. In the picture that you can see there, and I'll see if I can highlight, the diversion structure is in the lower right-hand corner, and that's to control the flow that comes down to the main plant. Right now, it's a relief sewer line, and if that sewer line is fully charged, it can overflow into Lake Superior, and it can overcharge the treatment plant. So we need to have a way of regulating that flow, so we can evenly distribute it down this line and down this line. That's the first step in getting control over what's coming into the front end of the plant. And if we can do that, then we can optimize that flow to the maximum ability of the sewer system to convey it. Then the other two phases are, what do you do with it now that you're getting it down to the plant? How do you manage that in the most cost-effective manner? And to kind of give you a little bit more of a highlight of where it is, it's just right near the K Street Sewer, and it actually cuts and runs underneath that sewer, that storm sewer. And then what will it accomplish? The purpose of the diversion structure is to allow more wastewater to reach the main treatment facility during wet weather. It will also allow, it'll be automated in such a way that the operators at the treatment plant can control how much water is coming down that line to the treatment plant, so that we don't overload the treatment process and harm our treatment plant. Cost is about a half a million dollars, and it's scheduled to begin in 2012. The next project is called Ultraviolet Disinfection, we call it UV disinfection, and that project is, has to do with the main plant and its disinfection, for those that might not know it, it's the process that protects public health. What it does is it kills the harmful organisms that can cause people to become very sick or even die from cholera or other diseases that can result from wastewater if it's not disinfected. The current process uses chlorine gas, and this is very dangerous, it's a very effective killer of organisms, but it's dangerous to handle, it's a toxic gas, if not handled properly, can do a lot of harm to people. The equipment that's used for dispensing this is old, went in in the, now originally in the early 70s, and it has gotten to the point now where we're going to need to replace that whole system, or upgrade to something else that doesn't have all the hazards. The city is able to obtain grant funding to pay for about 36% of the cost by moving to what's called Ultraviolet Disinfection. The old system incorporates chlorine lines that go out from the plant to different locations, and the lines, over time, are corroded and breaking. We've had breaks in the last year and had to replace some of the lines. And sulfur dioxide is another agent that actually takes the chlorine out before it's discharged, because it would be toxic in the environment. And what are we trying to accomplish? Well, if we convert to UV disinfection, it'll allow us a safer method for disinfection. The problem with chlorine is, if we did have a chlorine rupture, the vulnerability zone would be anywhere from a mile to 3.8 miles, depending on wind speed. So if we had a cloud that was moving toward Duluth, for example, we'd have to evacuate Canal Park and much of the hillside along Duluth, and here's, when we do a vulnerability assessment, we have to report what that zone would be in the case of an accidental release. So, and the two different radius points illustrate different wind speeds. One is, I think, around 3 miles an hour, and the other is at 11 miles an hour. The UV disinfection costs about $3.3 million. We have almost $1.2 million in grant funding, and for a total of $2.1 million. And I will be talking about, next I'll be talking about pH, and the reason I'm using these, going back and forth between them in the discussion, is they would both be housed in the same building. As we got grant funding for both of them, we were able to do that as one project, so we didn't have to, we saved on the cost of having to do two separate projects. And they'd occur at the same time, and it's expected that they go in in 2012. And then pH control, Phase 1, and what is pH control? It's the least expensive way that we can to reduce the amount of ammonia nitrogen in wastewater plant effluent. It does not actually remove all of the forms of ammonia, but it simply changes them into a less toxic form, and in the future, the city will likely be required to treat to actually remove the ammonia from the wastewater, but we have been able to get a permit approval to use pH adjustment, which is much less expensive than trying to remove this through a biological process. And as I noted, the two buildings, this is called proposed location for UV, this is also where the pH treatment would also be located. And the reason it's located in this position is the water, as it goes through the treatment plant, actually passes through here and then out to the harbor. So that's where it would be disinfected and adjusted for pH to remove the ammonia. Now, what will it accomplish? Ammonia is a form of pollution that kills fish and other aquatic species. The federal water quality standards require that treatment plants not exceed allowable levels. The city will not be able to consistently meet these standards without pH control. And once again, this is the same cost analysis we had on the previous slide, it's the same amount, this is not additive, these two go together, and so it's the same cost as we covered previously, it's the 2.1. And because pH are housed together, the two projects would need to occur at the same time and would occur in 2012. So with that, I can certainly go back and cover any other slides, or take any questions that you might have.
Yes, thanks, Dan, very good presentation. Now, if we were to keep the same system that we currently have, the chlorine system, which would need to be upgraded, do you have a ballpark figure on how much that upgrade would cost?
I'm pretty certain it would be under a million dollars, possibly down as low as half a million. The problem that we have is, we don't know the condition of the lines, the chlorine lines. We had a break this year, and we weren't, the problem that we're having is, we're not able to regulate the chlorine properly, so we're not able to properly disinfect right now. So what we need to do is put in a control system for metering both the chlorine and the sulfur dioxide, and possibly replace lines and chlorinator units. That would eliminate the hazard, but it would be a less costly approach, but a lot of treatment plants, WSSD and a lot of facilities, are moving away from chlorine just because of the potential for human health risks if there is an accident.
Dan, I have another question. How long, how long will a UV system be good for?
Well, you know, it should be, it's hard to say that UV will last forever, but right now, what we're seeing is, it's the best available technology. Now, if you had asked me that about 10 or 15 years ago, it was really becoming the standard, and now the systems are reliable. You're looking at it probably at 20 to 30 life, year life cycle in a system like that. I mean, that's comparable to what we have for the chlorine. And I don't see, I think somebody had asked me also, do they see the technology changing? And we haven't seen anything on the horizon that would do a comparable job to UV disinfection. It's safer, it requires that it be installed properly and maintained, and that would be done by our staff. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, I have a follow-up to that, too, and how long would the upgraded chlorine system last? And still be effective?
If we were able to totally replace the system, then I think we could say it'd be a comparable life cycle, but being that we're doing repairs, that's the hard part. If we went and replaced all of the lines and the automation and everything, we'd probably be into it for close to a million dollars. What would likely happen is, we'd replace just the key components, and then when things failed, we'd dig them up and fix it. The problem that that gets us into is, then we're not, then we're not reliably meeting our permit for chlorine, and if we don't regulate that, that's problematic. So it's hard to say in an old system that's 30 years old, where typically, when an asset reaches the end of its life cycle, the best thing to do is replace it with reaches the end of its life cycle, the best thing to do is replace it with new. It isn't always possible to do that, and then there's the costs of maintaining become higher. And the reliability factor. So those would be the issues.
Dan, on your slide, you showed that if there wasn't a chlorine release in the Ozon Zone, what would be the outcome to the residents in that zone?
Well, we have to file with EPA the potential for a hazardous release, and so they have guidelines on what we're supposed to do. Chlorine, as you know, if you get dosed with a high concentration, will render, will burn your lungs and the tissues in your lungs, so you can't breathe and you can't take an oxygen. So the concentration of the chlorine and the exposure time becomes the issue. We've been very fortunate, and we haven't had a tank rupture. So I don't know, but we would have to follow safety protocols. We'd have to have a command control center. We'd have to call in, you know, the, whoever the responders would be, the health department and the police, and notify Duluth and that type of thing. It's important for decision-makers to know that, because if we ever had a catastrophe like that, you know, then there's potential for lawsuits and all that, so.
How many people live in that Ozon Zone? Do you have any idea?
Oh, boy. Well, no, I don't, and I shouldn't hazard a guess, but I, it, the larger radius would take above South Superior, it looks like, and then in Duluth, you know, the Minnesota Point and, you know, along the, you know, the Canal Park, you know, that whole area.
Yeah, so even if it just happened on a con day in the Ozon Zone, there would be a tremendous loss of life, I'm guessing?
I'm not qualified, Bob, to say.
Okay, and with the UV system, if there's no danger of?
Well, the UV uses, it's a contained system that radiates the viruses and the bacteria within a closed system, and it uses ultraviolet radiation, so it kills the organisms as it passes through the tubes. They're like fluorescent bulbs, only they generate in a certain wave frequency that will kill organisms.
But what I'm saying, Dan, is there's no danger of a poisonous release or anything else to residents or to workers in the area?
No.
Thank you.
Yeah, just one quick question. How long has UV been used?
That's what I mentioned, you know, if you'd asked me about 15 years, I'd say well, around 15 to 20 years it's been in use, and it's become really the standard now. There isn't anything really that has come about that has replaced it as the system of choice for facilities. I think when it first came out, they consumed more electricity than they do now. They've been able to optimize that.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor McKenzie.
Yeah, Dan, I heard you mention tonight, and I know we've talked about this before, that, you know, we'll never forget 100% of the overflows. That's not possible. But I think everybody understands the importance of keeping this stuff up to date, you know, the sewage infrastructure and the water flow infrastructure. There's always these, the best systems out there, the top-notch, I mean, like we've talked about in the past, the bio membrane systems, all of these systems. But if we were to keep, at all levels, if we went with the least expensive, you know, depending on, you know, how they're tested, would we be able to keep these costs down? Because I think that's the question, or that's the complaint, I think, now, is that these, the increases that we're staring at now are excessive. You know, we're almost tripling the fixed rates and then some.
You know, I think that's the key question, and I think as we move forward, we need to have a lot of discussion. In the wastewater industry, as the video alluded to, the mayor and Gene, this is infrastructure that people aren't very knowledgeable of. It's out of sight and out of mind. And there's a lot of technology that goes into the treatment, the conveyance and the treatment of wastewater. I think the broader issue is how do we talk about these issues and help the public understand what it is that we're doing and what the costs are associated with that? Then you're in a situation where you can look at cost options and say, what can we afford, and what do we really feel we need for our community? And that's what we're hoping to do in the next year and two years, as we bring forward budgets that are, in individual years, looking at what those projects are and have a good discussion about what they are. The discussion that we've had about membrane bioreactors, the intention there was to try to get that, that information out, so people know that that's where the technology is going. And those costs are in the $75 million range. So in the next 20 years, when those regulations get to the point where we have to essentially produce drinking quality water, that's a technology that we'll be probably likely moving to, and people need to be thinking about it and talking about it and understanding how that works. And the technology may come down over time as well, you know, that, but it's important to have that discussion, so it isn't a surprise as we move forward.
Well, Dan, you mentioned this, but now I have a question on how. How do we educate the public?
That, that I could use a lot of help with. I've talked to Gene and the mayor about this, because it's not a glamorous issue. It's not something that, if you're into technology, research, science, it's fascinating. But if you're, if you're not into that, it can be the most boring thing for people to listen to. So I could use some help and guidance, and I'm hopeful that our-
Actually, Counselor Bridge just came up with a good idea.
Yeah?
Probably won't get in the first issue, but it could be in the second.
We'd love to do that.
Could be the sewage plant on the front.
Yes.
Might not attract too many people.
Well, you know me, I love to talk about wastewater.
Yes, we know. Thanks, Dan.
If I could follow up here, the projects that Dan has just discussed, what we did was we put actual dollars and cents and converted that into the rate increase. And I think one of the biggest frustrations when we would bring rate increase proposals forward in the past was that we would say we need X amount of money, and the council would say, well, what exactly is it for? And so what we've done is we can say every cent going from the variable rate of $4.96 up to $5.82, or whatever it is, we can tell you exactly how we've built that up to cover each and every one of these projects, or the component of lower water consumption, or the need to have more operating income. So hopefully, we've satisfied that request from the council. And I don't have a whole lot more of comments, but just wanted to mention that we do have some deadlines that I'm very concerned about. I'll be honest, I was, I was hoping for a vote, a positive vote from the council tonight. We do have some grant funds that we can afford. One more council meeting, October 4th, that would be the final deadline. And the reason I'm bringing that up is I talked to a number of counselors today at the informational forum, and I'm getting two very different, distinct wishes as far as the exact approach for right now. Some counselors are very tired of talking about the issue and want to pass this tonight. Other counselors are saying I could use that extra couple weeks to get more education on this. So I'm here to say, if you, you have the option of voting on it tonight, you have the option of holding off and voting on it October 4th, I would hope that it doesn't get referred to whatever committee, because we don't have, the committee meetings will not happen before October 4th. So if it doesn't happen tonight, our next opportunity is October 4th. And the grants that we're talking about are for the last two projects here, UV disinfection and ammonia, pH control. Total projects of $3.3 million, of which $1.2 million are grant funding, so it is very substantial. So I guess I would just hand it back to the council.
Counselor Bender. First of all, I think I probably need to make a motion to allow a council to speak more than twice on an issue.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All right. Well, Gene and I had a very long discussion today, because I came in with a number of figures and a number of questions about that. And when we say percentages, that's very difficult to understand. But when we say what this is going to cost in dollars and cents for like a single family or a two-person or a four-person family, and I know you have those figures, so I would like you to please present those.
Thank you, Counselor. I just realized after I stopped speaking that that was the last thing that I wanted to say, so thank you. These are averages. For the average user who is a single person living in a home, it would be estimated to be $5.22 per month additional for both fixed and variable. For a couple, the increase would be just under $7 per month. And for a family of four, I'm estimating about $10.25. Now, of course, if you have larger users, teenagers or whatever, that might go up. But this will be for the average user. Thank you.
For the public to understand, if we say, here's how much money it's going to cost, not here's what the price increase is going to be. And I will tell you, as I've, as I told you earlier, and as I told a number of counselors too, I made the mistake of going to Super 1 yesterday during daytime hours, and a number of people were asking me about this. And last week at Rotary, as soon as a number of people got there, that was their first question was about sewer rate increases, and I think most of theirs ended with, you're not going to pass this rate.
Counselor Eric. Well, I was just going to say, unfortunately, none of us want to have the rates raised here, but on the extreme, if the rates, if we don't do this, I mean, it's going to cost us more than I am. I mean, we're talking more than what's proposed here, because unfortunately, we're under the thumb of the federal government and state government, and right now, we're under the thumb of losing some grant money, which if we don't lose, somebody else may get that money that I'm ready to use, and so.
If I could just quick respond to that, whoever's listening that doesn't, that doesn't want rate increases will not like what I have to say, but I found this interesting. I was just doing some, some research today on fixed rates and variable rates and kind of some last-minute research, and I found an article, it was written by the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and they were doing research across the state of North Carolina to see how were rates structured, how were things getting approved? And the article made this comment, it said, "High rates do not necessarily reflect poor or inefficient management. In fact, some utilities with low rates have done so at the expense of their assets by making short-term sacrifices that are likely to have long-term adverse cost and service impacts." And there isn't a single one of us that wants to raise rates here. It is, we have dealt with this straight for two years, and I think all of us are very tired of dealing with it. We do need to do something, so I guess I'll close with that.
Counselor Finland.
Now, we've discussed this in the finance committee repeatedly and over and over again, and I think right now it's time to call a question, request a roll call vote. Roll call?
Counselor Olson is excused. Counselor Bridge?
Aye.
Counselor Bender?
I hate to say so, but I'm going to have to go.
Counselor Stanberg?
Aye.
Counselor McDonald?
Aye.
Counselor Doyle?
Aye.
Counselor Finland?
Aye.
Counselor Herrick?
Aye.
Counselor McKenzie?
No.
Counselor Brown?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to one.
Thank you. Unless there's business by the public, I'll entertain, if you have the motion, all in favor, please stand adjourned.